Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play. To roam free all day. In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and I'd ask the Boy Scouts in attendance to please lead us.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have enough seats for everyone? Is there extra seats in the audience? Make sure. Okay, council, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do not.
No changes. In that case, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Nobody signed up.
Thank you. Dr. Bowman, would you meet me at the podium, please?
We have this resolution honoring the historic bond between the town of Jamestown, North Carolina and the citizen city of Marion, Indiana. Whereas the town of Jamestown, North Carolina, is honored to recognize the city of Marion, Indiana, for its deep historical connection through the significant contributions of families who once owned lands in Jamestown and High Point areas and who chose to relocate during the Antebellum period of the 1840s to 1850s. Whereas these courageous citizens, free people of color, answered a higher moral calling by engaging in strategic acts of resistance to the Southern slavery system and in doing so became part of a broader movement for freedom and justice in American history. And whereas many of these families joined the local communities and responded to the sacred call of the National Immigration Convention of colored people held in Cleveland, Ohio, in August, 1854, to establish free black farm settlements in the Northwest Territories, including in and around Marion, Indiana. Whereas settlements not only provided safe havenets for freedom seekers on the Underground Railroad, but also served as centers of political, military, and moral resistance, contributing leaders and soldiers to the Civil War, with some descendants even having fought earlier in the Revolutionary War. And whereas patriotic and pioneering families included but not limited to the Pettitords, Weavers, Evans, Richardson's, Roberts, Jeffries, Carter's, and Shuecraft's helped shape the national narrative for liberty and civil rights due their bravery and sacrifice and unwavering belief in human dignity. And whereas the shared legacy connects our two communities to one southern and one northern through a powerful heritage of courage, faith, and perseverance. Now therefore, be it resolved, the town of Jamestown, North Carolina formerly honors and recognizes the historical contributions of these families and the lasting bond with the city of Marion, Indiana. And be it further resolved, that both municipalities commit to building an official relationship grounded in mutual respect, historical preservation, cultural exchange, and the ongoing celebration of our entwined heritage for freedom and justice.
Thank you so much. Did you have anything you would like to say about India?
Could all the families please stand? Good evening. My name is Dr. Latonya Bowman. I am the great-great-granddaughter of Meseraya Martin and her husband Ezekiel Fuller. A small, brief history of my Fuller family. Meseraya Martin was taken in by Judith Mendenhall at the age of nine and was raised by Judith Mendenhall and her family. Judith Mendenhall was the youngest child of Richard and Mary Mendenhall. The Mendenhall residence was located at the now-known Mendenhall Home Place located here in Jamestown, North Carolina, right across the street from the now-High Point City Lake Park. My great-great-grandfather Ezekiel Fuller worked for Nyris Mendenhall as a young boy, which is how Ezekiel and Meseraya met. The Mendenhall family that were located here in Jamestown were historically known supporters of abolitionist movement. The family you see standing are family descendants of the families mentioned in the resolution and are family descendants of my great-great-grandmother Meseraya Martin through her mother Mary Jane Carter. On behalf, sorry, on behalf of the families that are presently being represented in the resolution, we would like to thank the town of Jamestown and the council members for allowing our families the opportunity in having our voices to be heard and in allowing our stories to be told. Fifty-plus years of research has been placed into these documentations of our families in which we have known knowledge of our history. But now our place in the North Carolina history can be told in a manner where our truth can be finally spoken. I personally would like to thank the research of Ruby Sapleach, Norma Johnson, Shawn Rogers, Forrest Hazel, Dudley Lynch, Tim Gills, Dr. Kirsten Priest, Gwen Erickson, and the tribal citizens of the Hallowasaponi and Nesman Indian Nation that did assist us on this project. For it wasn't for all of them, none of this would have manifested into existence. Because of the research that has occurred, new historical documentation can now speak of the truth of who our families are and how our families played an intricate part of the Underground Railroad project going through Guilford County, North Carolina, into the Northwest Territories of Indiana and Ohio. Painting a picture of the Mendenhall Home Place located here in Jamestown, North Carolina, the false bottom wagon, the only one left in existence here in the United States, the stories that wagon could tell us in its travels going from here into the Northwest Territories of Indiana and Ohio and into Canada, where my extended families awaited to welcome the runaway slaves. Now, that's a beautiful story. There are other portions of these beautiful stories that are still unfolding and continue to be told with these same families that were mentioned. For there were other settlements outside of just the Weaver settlement in Indiana that were established in the Northwest Territories associated with the Piedmont area that were located in different counties of North Carolina such as Orange County, Alamance County, and Grandville, in which these same families also lived in those surrounding areas. They too also heard and knew of the sacred call that occurred in the meeting in Cleveland, Ohio, on August, 1854. These families were family-free people of color, which means that they never had been enslaved. The resolution and copies of the resolution will be given to the following for historical documentation purposes and record bookkeeping. The mayor of Marion, Indiana, the chief of the Nesman Indian Nation, the chief of the Hallowasaponi Indian Nation, tribal chairperson of the Okonichi Band of the Saponi Nation, the historian and genealogist for the Fuller Cruz Sap family, the High Point Museum, and the Mendenhall Home Place. At this time, we are now in the process of working on a North Carolina historical marker that will be placed at the High Point City Lake Park. We truly thank you for your love and support, and we look forward to working with the town council in the near future as this beautiful story continues to unfold and being able to be placed correctly with the accurate information in the history of North Carolina and the history of Jamestown and High Point. My intermediate and extended family that presently resides here in Jamestown, High Point, and Greensboro is extremely excited to finally reconnect with our extended families in Indiana and Ohio for the first time in 175 years. This August 16th and 17th, 2025, in Marion, Indiana, which the resolution we presented to them for the connection of Jamestown, North Carolina, and the Weaver settlement in Indiana.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right.
Rebecca? With the Parks and Rec representatives, please join Rebecca at the podium.
I want to get to do something positive. We have so much.
Whereas Parks and Recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Jamestown, and whereas the services provided by the Parks and Recreation Department are essential to the well-being of our community, providing safe spaces for play, health and wellness programs, cultural activities, and opportunities for social connection. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes healthy lifestyles, strengthens community bonds, improves mental health, and enhances the quality of life for all residents. And whereas this year marks the 40th anniversary of National Parks and Recreation Month, a time to recognize the vital role Parks and Recreation professionals and volunteers play in building stronger, healthier, and more connected communities. And whereas the 2025 theme, Build Together, Play Together, celebrates the power of collaboration and community spirit in creating inclusive and welcoming recreational spaces for people of all ages and abilities. And whereas the town of Jamestown will soon celebrate the grand opening of a brand-new accessible playground designed so that children of all abilities can play, learn, and grow side by side, embodying our town's commitment to inclusion, accessibility, and community building. And whereas Parks and Recreation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate our parks, promote the benefits of outdoor spaces, and encourage all citizens to get outside and enjoy the many recreational offers Jamestown has to offer. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Councilmember Rayburn, on behalf of Mayor Montgomery and the Jamestown Town Council, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Jamestown, and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of our parks and recreation facilities and to participate in the programs, activities, and special events offered throughout the month.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf, are you ready to join our Boy Scouts at the podium?
Yes. I'm glad you're here. I want to congratulate you on achieving the status of Eagle Scout and lucky for our ladies Sheldon and George and Amy Max for swimming low except season was swimming bowl. And I believe you, Edward, the Venice, for the evening. And I want this regarded as a world-class organization for children, both outstanding projects. And I want to congratulate you as well as achieving the Eagle Scout status. And if you're not going in here, just stand up. If I slip on, don't get in here. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. Thank you.
Matthew, do you have a manager's report for us?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. First off, municipal filing with the Guilford County Board of Elections for the town council mayor opened on July 7th and will close on July 18th at noon. Anyone interested in running should contact the Board of Elections for information on how to apply. Once the filings have closed, the town will contact each of the candidates, including the incumbents, if any, to discuss our candidate information session, which we have tentatively scheduled for August the 12th and 13th. Parks and Recreation Committee met on July 7th. They heard about plans for the town to seek some additional grant funding to repair and renovate portions of the golf course, including our tee boxes and bunker complexes. This represents outcomes 5B and 5H in the council's strategic plan. Jose Colon, our planning director, is going to be working on a request for proposals for a corridor study along Main Street here between Teague and Dillon Road, sort of the downtown area, in the coming months to help address outcome 6B in the strategic plan as well. He has also been working on outcome 7F, which was regarding a short-term rental ordinance, and so we'll be bringing you some information on that. We are tentatively looking at having a joint planning board and council meeting at a later date. Councilmember Wolf, our liaison to the High Point MPO, has been working on, with MPO leadership, to try to obtain some grant funding to allow us to complete some smaller projects which are identified in the Comprehensive Pedestrian Transportation Plan, which is outcome 7B in the strategic plan. Being as it's Parks and Recreation Month, we'll talk a little bit about parks. Scott Coakley, our Parks Director, is also in the process of planning a grand opening for the new accessible playground, the natural play area, and the basketball courts. We're going to keep you updated on that, but we'll also just ask you to keep an eye on our social media accounts for announcements. The rain has been a little bit of a challenge here recently. We are in the process of selecting a design-build solution to replace or renovate the fire station, Station 46, which is just behind us. Over the coming months, we'll be bringing some more information to the public. We're working on a possible open house during National Night Out on August 5th. I did get confirmation from Chief Carson that that will be between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., so we'll have an open house at the fire station. People can come out and see the fire trucks, and it's great for the kids. And that does represent outcome 5C in the strategic plan. Music in the Park, one of our key items in the strategic plan, outcome 3A, is going to be on Tuesday, August 5th. That's the only Tuesday event that we have, that's National Night Out. We'll be featuring AM Rodeo, as we have the last few years, and this is an event that's going to be honoring our first responders and our community partners. That is all I have for you this evening, unless you have specific questions.
So the open house for the fire department is 4:00 to 6:00, and then the music in the park starts at 6:00?
Yes, correct. That's correct.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Council, do we have any committee reports?
Well, believe it or not, TAC and the park do not meet in July or December, so I do not have anything to report.
Yeah, planning board, I met last night to do an amendment to the fence ordinance, specifically the agricultural zoning district. And I believe Jose will touch a little bit more on that when he comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Parks and Recreation did meet on July 7th, so a lot of updates. So Jamestown Park Playground is nearing completion, as we heard. For the folks who are driving by, including my daughter, and I know there's a six-year-old who's been calling you about this. Part of the holdup, there's been so much rain, and so there are drainage issues, but also there's a fence that needs to go in before the pour-in playground can go in, so just wanted to get that out there for any small children listening tonight and their parents who maybe are tired of hearing about it. The park restrooms are being designed, and the old ones will be taken down before the park opens, just for safety, which makes sense. And the baseball bathrooms will be open in the meantime. And the golf course has been busy, and there have been a lot of positive feedback comments about the new golf carts.
Great. Thank you. I doubt you have anything for summer.
No, school's out. School's out for summer.
Thank you. Do we have Guilford County Sheriff with us for the report today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the report I have is, in the month of June, there were seven total reports taken in Jamestown. There were three drug or weapon offense reports, one trespassing, one missing person, one lost property, and one child abuse report. There were 88 calls for service and 133 self-initiated calls, things at traffic stops. Average response time was nine minutes and 43 seconds, average reaction time is six minutes and 51 seconds. The reminder we have is to make sure that y'all take y'all's valuables inside, lock y'all's cars up. That's all I have, unless y'all have anything.
Any questions, council?
Do we have any data, or maybe we could get it for next time, on speeding tickets and weather?
So that's...
Speeding tickets issued on our Main Street?
I can pass that along, that you would like that number. That's in the 133, the self-initiated calls. That's included in that.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Yeah. We're hoping to see people slow down. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Y'all, good night.
Okay. Matthew, you're back up for consideration of the approval of the Facilities Use Guide.
Good evening again. In the recent years, the town has discontinued the use of this particular room in our facility as a rentable facility. And in response to the operational shift, the council has requested that staff develop an updated Facility Use Guide to reflect current policies, our available spaces, and procedures. The draft that you have in your packet's changed slightly. You were provided with an updated version of that. The changes include the recognition of the Thomas C. Ragsdale Senior Council Chambers, and then a little provision that says that changes may not be made to the policy without council's approval. Those are the only changes in that document. We respectfully request that council approve an updated Facility Use Guide, which will satisfy outcome 5E in the strategic plan, which was a priority for this year. Unless you have any questions, we're gonna be happy to answer them.
Of course, I want to thank Councilmember Glanville for your support in helping me bring this to the agenda. I've been trying to do it since about four years in earnest, so thank you for your support. Finally got this stuff to be settled, and I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the changes that were made from the original draft, so I'm certainly comfortable with it. I don't know if anyone has any other changes. If not, I make a motion to approve the Facility Use Guide for the town of Jamestown Council Chambers as presented.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and do you have a...
Then I wanted to make a separate motion about the changing of the name, because it was originally dedicated to Thomas C. Ragsdale Senior Civic Center for all he's done for the community as our first mayor. So I think it's important to show that separately. So I would make a motion to rededicate the Thomas C. Ragsdale Senior Civic Center to the Thomas C. Ragsdale Senior Council Chambers and approve a plaque being installed under the original plaque to display the new name and date of this rededication for Jamestown's first mayor.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Cliff?
Where are you? There you are.
It's time for the Christmas parade.
I can't believe it.
Always a good thing to talk about in July.
Yes.
My name's Cliff Paddock. I'm here on behalf of the Jamestown Rotary Club and our cosponsoring organizations, asking for your approval of a parade permit for a Christmas parade on December 7th, along with our usual request for nonprofit funding for traffic control, portable toilets, and postage. And perhaps most important, for the support of the town public services staff, as usual, before, during, and after the parade. It's probably the most critical part of the whole thing. Our application's pretty much what you've seen in the past, but I'm here if you have any questions.
I don't have a question, but I have a hot tip. And that is, I learned this last parade, apparently you need 10 Costco-size bags of candy to make it from beginning to end.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's never enough candy.
No, there never... I had seven last time, it did not make it. I think 10's gonna be the magic number this coming year.
We start with 30 or 40 bags, it always run out.
Well, for the first time I think ever, I was sick last year, I missed the parade. I was so sad, but I'm looking forward to it this year. And I just appreciate the Rotary Club continuing to do that every year. It is a big holiday tradition, starts off the season. My grandkids look forward to it. It's just, I really applaud y'all. It's just, I really applaud y'all for continuing that tradition.
Well, thank you. And we get a lot of help from the YMCA, the JBA, from you folks, and a lot of other people. So, thank you.
Truly a great community event.
I hate you were sick last year, but we sure had a great time riding through to come by and see you.
Yes.
We did drive by her.
I know. It made me cry. I don't want to... But I would make a motion to approve the special event permit request for the Jamestown Christmas parade as presented.
Second? On favor? Aye. All opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Jose?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A petition for a tax amendment has been received and reviewed by the Planning Department, and this is just a tax amendment to update our fence and wall standards of our Land Development Ordinance, Section 2.13-2. And as Councilmember Burgess stated, is to add some flexibility to our agricultural zoning district in terms of materials, and also set specific guidelines for height. Staff recommend that the council set a public hearing date for the consideration of the amendments to Section 2.13-2, fences and walls of the Land Development Ordinance, LDO, for the August 19 regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the Civic Center. And as Councilmember Burgess stated, it was approved for recommendation last night at Planning Board's meeting. Do you have any specific questions?
And it was approved at the Plaschford?
Recommended by Planning. Right, for approval.
Okay.
I could make a motion to set a public hearing date for the consideration of the amendments to Section 2.13-2, fences and walls of the Land Development Ordinance for the August 19 Town Council Meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at Town Hall.
Second? On favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Jose. And Faith? Do you have our contracts for public service, for services with the Jamestown Library?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the annual contract for the library services to be provided by the town, for the Jamestown Public Library. There isn't, this is an allowable use of funds, and allows the town to have these services provided by separate entity per General Statute 160A-209(c)(20) and 153A-264, and outlined specifically in Section 2. The contract calls for quarterly payments of $16,000 each for a total of $64,000 annually. This amount is reflected in the fiscal year 2526 budget. Staff recommends the approval of the annual contract with the Jamestown Public Library.
And I'd like to request to accuse myself, since I'm on the board.
I make a motion...
She makes, I'll take a second.
I'm the...
Yeah, for her to do, for her to...
Sarah was going to make the motion.
Okay, a second.
I make a motion to request Councilmember Rayborn for the vote on the contract with the Jamestown Public Library.
Perfect. Thank you. Second?
On favor? Aye. All opposed?
We got it. We got it that time.
Did we receive the annual report for the fiscal year last year?
We haven't yet. Rebecca or I will remind them.
Okay.
I can provide that once I get it.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
I make a motion to approve the contract for services with the Jamestown Public Library in the amount of $64,000, and allow the town manager, finance director, and assistant town manager to execute the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Faith, and we will move on to the YMCA contract.
So the town wishes to provide recreation services to the citizens of Jamestown. The town doesn't have available staffing levels, levels to be able to provide to do this, thus the town wishes to contract with the Ragsdale YMCA to provide these services. The town proposes to fund up to $10,000 for these recreation services for youth and adult residents. The Y will provide a list of names of each participant and their address, and the town will pay the YMCA based on the number of Jamestown residents participating in each recreational activity at the agreed-upon rate set forth in Exhibit A attached to the contract, up to a total of 10,000. Some of these services include adult fitness yoga in the park, water fitness for adults and seniors, youth sports programs, summer camp field trips. The staff recommends the approval of the annual contract with the Ragsdale YMCA, and this does reflect in the budget for fiscal year 2526.
I just have a question that I should have, I should have thought of with the library too. Am I making it up? Or did, in the past, did they come give presentations throughout? Like, I remember Kevin Motley coming, coming to give presentations. Was that around this time, or was it...
I think it sort of changed when we, when we went to the contract for services.
Oh, I see. Okay.
When they paid us for a grant.
But, okay. Got it.
Well, did the town receive the actual number of Jamestown residents for the fiscal, last fiscal year? And did they use the full 10,000?
I don't think they used quite the whole 10.
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly. Don't quote me on this, but I think it was more around 85, maybe?
So that, those funds go into general fund balance that were not expended?
And they do provide a list of Jamestown residents for us to reimburse them.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Well, I would make a motion to approve the contract for services with the YMCA in the amount not to exceed 10,000, and allow the town manager, finance director, assistant town manager to execute the contract.
Second? On favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Faith.
Thank you.
Scott, we are ready for your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a quick report that summarizes the financial performance of the golf operations for the second quarter of 2025, well, the final quarter. The total revenue for the period was $510,418, with consistent monthly performance and peak in May. Primary revenue drivers included greens fees, cart rentals, both which showed an upward trend. Expenditures for the quarter totaled $259,699. That encompasses personnel, operating costs, contract services, and capital outlays across golf maintenance and the golf shop operations. The net monthly gains were recorded throughout the quarter, accumulating in a total quarterly gain of $250,718. While most of the revenue categories performed steadily, clubhouse rentals and outings showed a slight drop in June. Overall, the golf operations demonstrated a strong, strong fiscal health and effective cost management. And while I'm up here too, I just wanted to, and it's Parks and Rec Month, give a shout-out to this crew back here, and the ones that couldn't make it tonight, and just extend my deepest gratitude for everything that they do. Their dedication, hard work, and passion for maintaining the beauty, safety, and accessibility of our parks and our golf courses don't go unnoticed. From early mornings to long summer days, your efforts create spaces where our community can relax, play, and connect. You've helped make Jamestown a place that we're all proud of. Thank you for making every visit to the park or our golf course a special one, and we appreciate y'all more than words can say.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to you, I know Matthew, to you, but your staff at Parks and Rec, but for working on a holiday on July 4th and coming out and doing Music in the Park. Yeah. That's very much appreciated. I know, we had a big turnout for the community, so it was very nice to be able to have that. But I know that was a holiday for you all, and you all worked, and so we appreciate that.
They did an outstanding job, and our concerts, you can see that was packed that night, even on the 4th of July, without fireworks, so.
Yeah.
They did a great job.
The new fees, golf fees, have been in place now for a little bit. Have you had any pushback on that from anybody?
I don't think anybody, I don't think we've had a single complaint. Nobody's, in fact, I was in there today, and a gentleman came in and said that he's been playing up in Colorado, and it's $100 around, and the courses aren't nearly as pretty as ours.
Oh.
And we have people all the time from out of town and say, it's, whatever the rate may be that day, it's $55. I said, that's it? So I think we're still in that happy medium.
Yeah, right. And this is a great report, a good quarterly report, but I see it's highlighted here, it says the totals do not include the capital outlay amounts. What, what is that? And if you don't have it...
I don't have that with me.
If you don't, then you can get it, that information later.
Actually, I think that was from, nah, I'm not going to say. I don't want to lie to you.
Yeah. Okay.
Let me get back to you.
If you don't mind, please forward that on. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Scott, do you have a status or a statistic on numbers of how many out-of-town players we're getting since, you know, the new upgrades?
No, that's hard to track. We do get a lot of out-of-towners coming in and play where, since we're close to the airport, people come in on business, but we've looked at some software that can help us tell, tell us who was at the concert, or how many people were at concerts, or how many people are from out of town, and things like that. It's just super expensive, so we haven't really pursued it, but I understand that there's another municipality or county locally that's got it, that we might be able to try to work with to try to figure out some of those numbers, and by working with them on their software, so.
Could we, I mean, this is a very, very low-budget item, but like, could we just have a guestbook? Would people do that?
It's an idea. We can look into that.
Yeah. With name and city.
Right, yeah. Just simple, you know. I don't think we need to prove that they're from somewhere, but...
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's...
Yeah, we need to see their IDs and...
It's good that, and we do know who plays from Jamestown because of them getting discounts, so it's good to know how many people come from Jamestown.
Staff is real good about asking, because they do ask for the, for the discount, and staff does verify their Jamestown address.
Yeah.
With some software that we're looking at replacing the current one, which will save us some money too, we'll also be able to keep up with a player profile, and they'll have their own profile on there. They won't have to tell us every time.
Yeah. That would be interesting.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott.
I think we kept Scott talking long enough that the rain's letting up.
Okay, did you have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Karen Elizabeth.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Elizabeth. I live here in Jamestown. I just wanted to take a moment and thank all of you for the budget y'all have pulled together. While I don't necessarily agree with all the points of it, like I'm sure, you know, nobody really does, but anyway, thank you for the work that you put into it, the effort, the time. I've prepared many budgets in my life. I've prepared many quarterly updates, and I started when it was on a 13-column spreadsheet, not a computer that was easy to update. And you know, the higher-ups always circled it in red and all that, and I finally was smart enough to say, I know where the padding is, do not do it in red. It's all over. Again, thank you. You know, like I said, I've prepared many in my lifetime, so I know how difficult it is to pull it together and come to a consensus, so just thank you for taking the time and the effort to do it. I know it's not easy.
Thank you, Karen.
Nobody else signed up?
Council, do we have other business?
Nope. Well, I always have to say something. The retaining walls on the new sidewalk on Ragsdale Road, and they still have the orange cones up there, are, is it through, or have they just haven't picked those up, or? Because it looks finished, but he shook his head no.
We'll be putting a fence up there. We got close to the end of the budget year, and instead of trying to cross the budget year with the fence contract, we...
So there's a fence?
We got the, we got the quotes in before, but it wasn't going to be able to be delivered and installed, but yes, we will be...
That goes over that wall?
Yes, it'll be behind the, it'll be almost against the wall to provide the most distance from the parking area.
Okay.
So cars can overhang.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you for the question.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second? On favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.